I congratulate all the successful candidates who will be sworn in today. Mayor Bartlet, Auditor-elect Criswell, Counselors Q, Gilbert, and Lakin.
Well, it's such an incredible honor to stand in front of you today and accept the privilege to be sworn in as mayor of the city of Tulsa for a second term. For more than a year, our city was in the midst of an election to choose new leadership or reaffirm current leadership in our community for the next several years. I'm energized by the opportunity of a second term, and I thank Tulsans for going to the polls and record numbers and expressing their confidence in me. I welcome and humbly accept that responsibility. I will make the most of this time and dedicate it to the sweeping issues that confront our city. I'll do it with that mindset that our future will be brighter than our past, and by confronting our biggest problems today, we will open the door for even greater accomplishments to come. I will not kick the can down the road of passivity. Today, we can be thankful for so much. We are the top choice for Americans looking for a job and affordable housing. Entertainment, music, sports, and the arts, the arts, they thrive in Tulsa like never before, and multiple areas of our city are experiencing growth where there was glite just a few short years ago. Job creation and retention of jobs have been successful, and I rate it tactical, even more new jobs than before. We've balanced difficult budgets and made our city more efficient than ever. Last month, voters approved a capital package, and for the first time in Tulsa history, we are actually lowering the sales tax rate. I'm very proud of such a significant statement of local and for local governance. Our emergency response systems have become more efficient and better managed. Both our 911 system and Emsa have successfully improved their mission of providing their essential services. While the work of the last few years is significant, this occasion begs the attention of the future. I've had many people ask, "Well, what's next? What's gonna happen?" Well, can I assure you that Victoria and I will continue to attend a different church every Sunday, as we've done since I've been mayor. Some reporting relationships will change. We've already announced the change of the green waste reporting changes to the mayor, but the 911 system, by executive order, will soon become a part of the Tulsa Police Department and report directly to the chief of police, Chief Jordan. Economic development will be moving from the planning department to be led by Clay Bird in the mayor's office, and this reflects the very close collaborative relationship that our office that I have with Mike Neal and the Regional Chamber of Commerce, as well as the terrific relationship that we have with the area mayors. Our economic handbook is the same for all of us. But certainly, crime fighting and prevention continues. Collaboration, intelligence-led policing, and the tried and true beat system have made our policing more effective. Tulsa Police Department initiatives have arrested criminals and thugs throughout every section of our city, and they work diligently with other agencies such as the U.S. Marshals Office, the Oklahoma Attorney General Scott Pruitt's office, and Tulsa County, to name a few. I've worked vigorously on a public safety initiative that unfortunately fell short of a majority of support from our city council. However, it was a great first step, and it is a map on how we can achieve the number of officers that our city needs without a tax increase. I look forward to addressing this approach again. We have to address crime in this community on a broad and realistic scale. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a societal problem as it relates to crime issues in Tulsa. Although we have reduced the number of meth labs, those who use meth have increased. We in Tulsa County have the highest per capita rate of death from prescription drug overdose in Oklahoma, one of the highest in the United States. Ben's drinking of alcohol in Tulsa County is two to three times worse than other counties in our state. This is a clear societal problem in my view. Panhandling, homelessness, shoplifting, homicide, each and all have a relationship to drug abuse. I'm calling for a public safety plan, starting with the summit, that will address at least two needs. First, address the manpower needs of our police and fire departments. Secondly, confront the connection between crime and drugs in our community. I am appointing our city attorney, David Omeilia, to lead this summit, much as he has led a summit while he was the U.S. Attorney. Part of the summit's mission will be to evaluate methods of economic development that have successfully dealt with bad and poor lifestyle choices. It is time to act in a big way and develop long-term answers to the crime issues in our city. We must find a way to invest in public safety in such a way that is within our means, without raising taxes, but gets us to the consistent funding that is required if we are to achieve those goals. This will be the cornerstone of my administration going forward. Roughly a year ago, I set out to define the problems we have in our city's pension plan for non-sworn employees. Like most public pension systems, ours is in need of significant reform. We noticed that our pension system is about 78 percent funded, better than some, worse than others, but not nearly where it needs to be and far from its peak pre-recession levels. Despite our efforts, that doubled pension contributions over the past three years, our liabilities continue to grow. Liabilities have grown faster than our ability to pay for them. This means a system needs structural reform. I commission a committee to review our pension. Their recommendation is to change our non-sworn pension to a defined contribution system for new employees. Retired and existing employees will keep the existing plan. Like many issues, there are a lot of options and opinions on how to reform the system. However, this is an issue that must be addressed if we are to leave our city better than we found it and better for the future. I will continue to push for a pension reform that is fair to our employees and retirees and puts the city on a path to financial health in our retirement plan. This can be done, and the employees and the taxpayers will be better off as a result. I will also continue to work with the city council and look forward to the next mayor council retreat, where for the past two years, we have defined our collective joint goals and objectives. Prior to my administration, this had not been done, and it is no small feat, this is a great opportunity for us to get all in one room, talking openly, and laying our perspectives and visions on the table. This process has been terrific for our community, and I expect it will continue to serve us well. My thanks, my sincere thanks to our city council for their continued support of this effort. City Hall in your neighborhood will also continue. As a group of elected officials and city officials, we have taken City Hall to your neighborhood in a very literal sense, meeting all over town and in each city council district multiple times. This effort allows open discussion and a response to citizens in a format accessible to all. This is collaboration and transparency at its best. Our collaborative relationship with the Tulsa County government is strong, and we must keep it that way. I thank the city council for their part in this, as we have worked together to foster a better relationship with them on many fronts. We work for many of the same citizens, and you can be satisfied to know that our elected officials at the city and the county level are well aware of that fact, because our mission is to serve you better. Economic development, if successfully achieved, this is the key to our success as a shiny light of hope and for future prosperity of Tulsa as a city. That includes water in the Arkansas River. With a $250 million gathering place at one end of the Arkansas River in Tulsa and a $355 million river spirit and Margaritaville destination at the other, I am as sure today as I'm standing here in front of you that we will have water in that river and development in, between, around, and on both sides of the river. Thank you. The development of our river will flourish with the private sector involvement. Then, of course, there are the bread and butter economic strengths, beginning with the energy industry, primarily oil and natural gas. We have a renaissance underway in that industry, and many companies are poised for growth. In the first decade of this century, the energy industry began an unprecedented growth that continues today in Tulsa, Oklahoma. Our heritage in this industry, coupled with our geographic advantages, make us attractive to, for job growth to continue in the energy sector. I will work aggressively to pursue and retain energy jobs in our community. We are again becoming a destination for energy companies rather than just an origin. Aviation and aerospace still hold a tremendous amount of potential for our community. I believe that the merger between American Airlines and U.S. Airways will allow Tulsa a premier place at the table for major airline maintenance work in that industry. This is due to our enormous facilities and a workforce that is second to none in the world. However, like all assets, we must cultivate them and keep them viable and relevant. We have learned our lessons, and we will approach this prudently and effectively so that our maintenance base remains viable. We also will continue our efforts for workforce development. Young workers and entrepreneurs alike are key to any prosperity. I will continue working with our young business people to create a vibrant community within which they will work and live. We will make our community healthier and more active by enhancing our parks and encouraging an active lifestyle. Assets of our community, like the Arkansas River, must be utilized if we are to achieve our full potential as a city. We will be implementing our city park master plan, and we'll be making proactive changes, making our parks reflective of today's needs and realities. Entrepreneurs and workers of the younger generation want to live in a place where they can be active and entertained. We're doing a great job at bringing these options to our citizens, and that will continue so that residents of other cities are committing to us for those same opportunities. My friends, if you think these last four years have been quite a ride, well, the pump is primed today, and the results will have an impact on every person in this community, because we are one Tulsa. We will no longer watch the airliners fly over. They'll be landing at one of this nation's new destinations, Tulsa. Hold on to your hat, tighten your seat belts, open your eyes, and get ready to grin like a bunch of Cheshire Cats, because we're in for a great ride. Thank you very much for the honor of continuing as your mayor of the great city of Tulsa, Oklahoma. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Auditor-elect Kathy Criswell.
I'd like to thank the late Phil Wood, who was my leader, my mentor, and my friend. Having an example like that to follow puts me years ahead. I'm 20 years following those footsteps, these size six-and-a-half shoes probably won't quite fill those in, but I'm gonna give it my best. And I'll be asking myself, "What would Phil do?", because he was definitely a wonderful, excellent city auditor for us. When looking at what's gonna be coming up in my one-year term that I have to get to the city of Tulsa, I want you to know that the word auditor at its roots means to listen. So, I'm going to be listening to the citizens of Tulsa, I'm going to be listening to our leaders, I'm going to be listening to our managers, and I'm going to be directing the city auditor toward those things that you find most important. And I think that's what the city auditor is here for, to listen and to provide the direction that our city needs. The other thing that auditors, that I've noticed about auditors is that a lot of our voters, as I was talking to them, they weren't quite sure what a city auditor was, or why do we vote for them? And when you look at the results of the election, there were people that didn't check a box for the city auditor. So, I want everyone to know what the city auditor's office is doing, and so I'm going to be not only listening, but I'm going to be giving the information to people about what we're finding. You're a watchdog, so you need to see what we've looked at and what we've found out for you. So, in this next one year, what I want to accomplish is as much as possible, nose to the grindstone, working hard, and getting out there and making Tulsa a better place. Thank you for allowing this chance.
Next, we will hear from Counselor Jenny Q.
I want to thank mostly the people of District 2 in the city, because they have made this job so remarkable. I've met so many great people, so many people that really want to be a part of this city. And in the next year, that is my plan, to take these homeowners associations and enlarge them. Take the wonderful homeowners associations I have in District 2 and let them help areas that don't have homeowners associations. We've got a lot to do, we have a lot with the river, working with the mayor, and it's been just great this year. And I want to thank my city councilors for teaching me so much, but most of all, I want to thank the staff of the city council. They have made my job so much easier, mostly, and I can't seem, John Fathergill, who's with me all the time and works so hard and keeps this city going. And I want to thank all the department heads with the city. I know I've driven you crazy, you should've never given me your cellphone. And answer the phone, Mr. Twombly, any hour of the night I call. And I want to thank the people, the elected officials that were past elected officials that have helped me and answered all my questions, that they probably thought, "Oh, my gosh, I'm gonna call-block her." But the employees of the city of Tulsa have also been a blessing. They work so hard to make this city great. And I also want to throw out a little special thanks to the county for working with me on my very first project, Commissioner Keith, on getting an apartment complex, so it shows the city and council, city council and county can work closely together. But we're gonna have a great year, and thank you, everyone that's had to listen to my phone calls and answer all the questions. But anytime there's a problem in District 2, I hope they know I'm there, and we want District 2 and the rest of the city to get more involved with our city, because it's a great place, and thank you so much for being here supporting us today.
We'll now hear from Counselor Karen Gilbert.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the residents of District 5 for having the confidence in me to represent them for another term. I came into this position with no experience in city government. After one year, I feel like I have a lot of experience. My first term, we had some important issues to cover, and this council came together as a new one, and today, we stand stronger than ever, working together for what's best for Tulsa. We may not always agree with each other, but we always make sure that we are making the right decisions to make progress in our city. We have a lot to do, but this council, I have all the confidence we will continue moving Tulsa in the right direction.
Counselor Phil Lakin.
I'm honored to get to sit in the seat that I do. There are so many people who have gone before us, who have built the structures that are pictured in this slideshow that is going on behind us, things that I'd never had anything to do with, but things that we take advantage of and things that are part of our tradition and our culture in Tulsa. But in the slideshow are things that people in this room did have a hand in. The B.O.K. Center, One Oak Field, Mayor Savage, I'm sure there's something up there, and I'm trying to come up with all of the images that have come across the screen, but there's so many things, but there's now the aha that we had a part in, the Guthrie Green, the gathering place that's coming up. Whether or not we paid, played a significant role or a slight role in that, we were still here, and we were still trying to pave the way in so many regards for what the future of our city will become. So, I'm immensely honored to get to serve as one very, very, very tiny piece of this very important process that we have that is called the government in the city of Tulsa. I thought I got to do a lot through my role at the Community Foundation, but it's small in comparison to what we all get to do when we work together. So, my hats are off, my hat, I should say, is off to the mayor, to the city council, who I deem my brothers and sisters. I think we've done a great job at being real civil, being constructive in what we are focusing our efforts on. I know for a fact that the next year will be just as good as the last two years have been, if not better. I hope that we can focus on the two things that run right through the heart of our city, those two, Route 66 and the river.
Counselor Ewing.
Counselor Ewing reminds us of the international appeal of Route 66, if we would just wake up and take advantage of that. And we all know the appeal of the river and how important putting water, not only water back in the river, but putting things on the sides of the river will be to the future of our city. We've got a great start in all of those things, but it will literally take every single one of us to get them moved forward and get them completed. So, we've got a year, a year to go, we can get those two things at least taken care of in a year.
Okay, we now turn to the business part of our program. The oath of office for the mayor will be done by the Honorable Gregory Frisell, Chief Judge of the U.S. District Court, and the Honorable Claire V. Egan, Judge of the U.S. District Court. I say oaths, because the lawyers have determined that there are two oaths required. So, for those of you who are paying attention, we are being redundant on purpose.
I do F. Bartlet, Jr.
I do F. Bartlet, Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly.
And that I will not knowingly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as mayor of the city of Tulsa.
My duties as mayor of the city of Tulsa.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you very much.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Oklahoma.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Tulsa.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Tulsa.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of my elected office.
The duties of my elected office.
During such time as I am mayor of the city of Tulsa.
During such time as I am mayor of the city of Tulsa. Next, we will have the oath of office for City Auditor-elect Kathy Criswell, and it will be delivered by the Honorable Burke Bishop of the Municipal Court.
I, Kathy Criswell.
I, Kathy Criswell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not.
And that I will not.
Knowingly receive.
Knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As city auditor of the city of Tulsa.
As city auditor of the city of Tulsa.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And now the statutory oath. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Oklahoma.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Tulsa.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Tulsa.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of my elected office.
The duties of my elected office.
During such time.
During such time.
As I am auditor of the city of Tulsa.
As I am auditor of the city of Tulsa.
Okay, congratulations.
And a final oath to Counselor Q, Counselor Gilbert, and Counselor Lakin.
I, would you each state your names?
I, Karen Gilbert.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not.
I will not.
Knowingly receive.
Knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Or any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As city counselor of the city of Tulsa.
As city counselor of the city of Tulsa.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Now the statutory oath. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Oklahoma.
Constitution and the laws of the State of Oklahoma.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Tulsa.
The charter and ordinances of the city of Tulsa.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of my elected office.
The duties of my elected office.
During such time as I am a member.
During such time as I am a member.
Of the Tulsa City Council.
Of the Tulsa City Council.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you for coming to the special meeting of the city council, December 2, 2013, at 2:30 P.M. Would you call a roll, please?
Moore. Uh, what? You're here. Lakin.
Here.
Finum.
Here.
Henderson.
Here.
Q.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Ewing.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Steele.
Here.
Item one, first item on the agenda is election of a new chair and vice chair to the city council. I think, uh...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I know any council member for chair?
Got a motion, second?
Who was the second? I can't see you sitting like this.
Call a roll, please.
Moore. Yes, Lakin.
Yes.
Finum.
Yes.
Henderson.
Yeah.
Q.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Ewing.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Steele.
Thank you. At this time, I will turn the gavel over and the meeting over to our new chairman, Counselor Gilbert.
Madam Chair, I would move to nominate Phil, on Counselor Lakeen, sorry.
All right.
My second.
All right. Dana Colville.
Moore.
Yes.
Lakeen. You both vote for yourself.
Conflict of interest?
Yes.
Finum.
Yes.
Henderson.
No.
Q.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Ewing.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Steele.
All right, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Did anyone sign up to speak on any of the agenda items? Before, before we adjourn, I want to give a very big thank you to Counselor Patrick for all of his hard work that he did this year for us and being a great mentor. I have a little gift for you.
A parting gift?
Yes, a parting gift.
Oh, thank you.
Yes. Kind of set the bar last year with the gavel. This is something different.
The Greenway screw.
Yeah.
All right.
A little keepsake of all the councilors and a little bit of what we experienced last year, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Congratulations.[1782.73]